Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here yet again. So this is our second official building committee of the votes that were here about a month ago. So the goal last month was introductions, talk about the mission. I talked about some of the processes that we've been through through feasibility study and then creating this official building committee and hiring of SMA as our official design service term. So that's what sort of happened last month. We had, I think, some great discussion, a lot of good questions that we're going to get into and sort of follow up from the agenda. But then I just want to, I guess I want to jump ahead. But I just want to give a lot of props to SMA. The experience that we had through the feasibility study and how the process that we've had over the last month or so. From my vantage point, and I've said this in some planning meetings that we've had, update meetings, the ability for the feedback that has been given to SMA and then the response to that feedback has been, I think, tremendous. So I want to say publicly, say thank you for that. I think we all know, we worry about the money, we worry about the budget, we'll get to that eventually, but the fact that the response to feedback is wonderful, I appreciate that. So without further ado, without jumping around the agenda too much, let's just look on the table, probably for Deb, probably for all of us, just introduce ourselves, again, what role you have, what your background is, on any of the committees we're attending.
My name is Mark Daley, I'm chairman of board trustees for the school.
Leonard Roberts, old Roberts Brothers and Over Company in Asheville, graduate here, advisor to the carpentry department.
Tim Moran, I'm Jay Moran Mechanical, and also advisory to the flooring department.
I'm John Parrott, I taught here a long time, and I'm usually forestry and I'm soul science, and I understand the energy sector reasonably well, so that's what I'm going to do.
Chris Alexander, I'm a student in horticultural, work with my father in John Construction, head of that.
Tom Berry, I'm an architect, we have two real architects in Immers, I am also on the carpentry advisory board.
Helen Fantini, project manager, architect with SMA, if you think we all know, also a parent of the book.
Matt Wright, senior architect with SMA.
Rachel Hafler, chief architect for the church inside.
Lucy Conley, civil engineer with virtue design.
Tim Smith, facilities manager, I'm a book.
Rick Quadro, board of trustee member.
And James Osvak, I'm a horticulturist.
So I think the first official agenda item is to update the committee on the proposed design. Again, I just want to do those, Rick Segway, Alan Terro, Helen and Dean, they have been involved. So we have this official building committee, we can meet typically, I think our plan is to meet monthly, probably the same Tuesday as the board trustees meeting, so we can get some access to trustees that are on the committee to meet the same afternoon. There's a subcommittee comprised of Tim, Crystal, myself, Joe Bianca as the principal. We've been meeting with SMA on a weekly basis, basically, we assume. And I'm not going to steal a thunder about the site visit that he had earlier on, I will talk about that in a little while. But we've been meeting weekly through so we can talk about the design ideas that you saw last month, get some feedback, sort of some revisions, and that process has been happening weekly, we'll talk about that in more detail. I think the presentation you're going to see this afternoon, SMA has not walked us through some of the process of revising the plans, some questions that we've got to tackle. So I think what we're going to see today is where we're behind what we saw last month, obviously. But we are going to be looking for a lot of input from a lot of people, specifically what I'm hoping for is input around the site, physically where the building should be sat down back, I think, today's meeting that we had earlier today, there's something special about that. So without further ado, we'll talk it over to Helen and Dean, if you want to walk us through.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks for the kind words. We hope never to disappoint you. Oh, there we go, great. So gotten through the introductions, but essentially, this is the list of topics we plan to cover with you all today, talk a bit, a little bit more about the process to date that Andy's referred to, we can update on the plan, the building plans, how we're comparing square footage wise, with the early work done during feasibility. Fortunately, today we have virtue design group here with us, maybe we'll jump in with both feet on site planning, so they'll show you some early studies there, where we are in the information gathering process, and then we'll touch on the schedule and the steps. So process wise, I think Andy's already mentioned, we meet weekly, but our first real weekly meeting was back on the 20th of June, we're calling it the kickoff meeting, we had great input, actually a great group of students that James and Mark had sent over to talk to us, had strong opinions, it was really wonderful to interface with them, also met with the working group on that day and did a building walkthrough and a site walk around. And then since then, we've really been meeting on a weekly basis, taking in feedback, refining the plans as we go, and reacting to comments, mostly around square footage, but also around location of various parts of the building. So can you turn it over to Matt?
So we started really with a refinement process. When we had come to you and shown you the plan that we had developed for the interview, we really did that in a way of information. So it was really wonderful, as Helen said, to be able to meet with everyone, get feedback from a whole bunch of different sources, and that really spurred these four options that I've developed. This is a little looser in terms of us looking at relationships, program spaces that were there. I think one of the primary aspects that we were trying to flush out, flesh out through the, these initial options was the location of the offices, staff offices, and how those relate to both classrooms and as well as the shop spaces. We understood that visibility is key, but whether it was visibility in classroom spaces or the shops was really the question, and that's what those four options really looked to understand. I think what we really arrived at, hearing the feedback from these options, is that having some oversight of the offices directly of the shop spaces was the most critical. And that's really because that's where the students are really engaging hands-on activities and where safety is paramount in terms of making sure that the oversight is there. So that was good feedback, and we proceeded to look at such a good options and developments, refinements to that, using that option four as sort of our spring point. And so we came back, I think this was actually two weeks later because it was over the 4th of July holiday, but we came back and we refined those options, and we were really looking to understand where footage is and where everything fell, trying to make sure that we could incorporate M E P spaces into the plan, looking to understand also a little bit more about the retail program and the head house and really how those spaces really can function together and actually have combined in terms of their footprint, in terms of how things are going to be used. So as we went through these options, things were working themselves out in terms of adjacencies and everything started to feel good. The challenge that we still faced here though is that you can see in the bottom right-hand corner of each of those plans that the overall footprint of the building was still trending a little bit higher than what the feasibility study plan had been looking towards. And so as Andy has reinforced to us over and over again, budget is really a critical consideration. And so as we move forward in this past week, and hopefully actually showed the group this morning, we actually looked at ways of compressing the square footage while still maintaining the program pieces that were here.
I have a question. When you presented last time, you talked about perhaps using some wood, especially the C L T. Now surely there are some expectations of C L T clear span lengths, and so how do those affect this design? Are you offering a span that's 10 inches longer than certain benchmarks that the wood would have to jump up, or twice? I just wondered if you had taken that into consideration, Ken?
I think we're still sort of at the infancy of sort of that level of understanding of where we are. We have had an initial discussion, structural, engineering, really understanding the constraints of what's there in terms of span distances. We were working initially with a 16-foot base facing in one direction, longer spacing in another direction, assuming that there's going to be some type of truss work up above that we'd be able to handle the longer spans in the single direction. We've actually, you have to press that down to 14 feet as a sort of typical bay working across. We still think that's readily within the ability of what the C L T will offer, and that is still our intention.
Okay, it's like 75 by 150, is it generally the footprint?
I think that was, I think it's actually gotten a little bit tighter overall, I forget exactly what footprint we're, the.
It's 85 by 140.
Right, that was probably before we shrunk it by the 16.
1.4, 1.4.
Right, so we'll be a little bit, we can get you the specific dimensions out there just to help inform everybody as we move forward.
But it's very much still in our minds to.
To use the economics.
Or the use of C L T.
So that led us to these two options that we'll show you in a little bit more detail here, and I'll run through sort of their program components, because we realize that everyone is going to be able to, so we're looking at these in detail for the first time. We're referring to them as option four B point one and option four B point two, as I mentioned also this morning, it gets a little bit verbose in terms of what the references are, but it really speaks to the history of them in terms of how they evolved, so it's a good marker for us moving forward. What we've done is shrunk down the footprint a little bit, you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, it's just over 10,000 square feet, 1,500-ish, still 1,000 square feet over where we were in terms of feasibility study, but this we felt was a good compromise in terms of coming down, it bridged the gap that we had there by about 50%, what we were showing previously, and still feels good overall. If you look across the top of the plan, we're starting maybe on the upper right-hand corner, you see four classroom spaces, one of those is really dedicated to horticultural drafting shop, that's where that activity would take place. There's simulator classroom that is right next to it, both of those classrooms shrunk a little bit because we understood more about the numbers, teams that would be in there and the activities that are going to be going on. We're still waiting on cut sheets for the actual simulators themselves to make sure that that is the right size space, so might need to get a little bigger, it might need to get a little bit, or could get a little bit smaller potentially when we have that information, but this is going in the right direction. The next two classrooms off to the left-hand side are more for elective purposes, so those are set up with more typical student desks and chairs, or tables and chairs, each can accommodate 24, 25 students within, so that's what would be sort of the elective function in there. So you have two of those larger classrooms. Right to the left of that, we have a bank of student staff toilets, as well as custodial rooms, M E P rooms that are in there, water, electric and data room. We have included in this layout a student locker alcove, so rather than stringing the lockers along the hallway, which can get a little chaotic just when students go out to actually get all of their materials from the lockers, consolidating in one spot in the locker alcove seemed like it was a good approach overall from the building standpoint. We come then across the hall down directly below where those lockers are, that's where the head house space and sort of retail component has been combined. There is still the salvage desk that's in there right now that we've brought over, we think will make a really nice sort of reception desk, actually, when anyone comes in, staff comes in to purchase, it's really right there, front and center, being such a nice piece, it makes sense, it will make a really nice entry field configuration there. And so the head house space is right there, we're showing a couple of storage rooms located around there just for some added capacity. And then if we move to the right, horticultural shop is right in the middle, it does have some overhead bays doors, and there is a storage space that's located directly off of that, whether it's for storage or tools, that'll get refined as we move forward with the programming. We are still showing a footprint in there for climbing structure, and we had a lot of good discussion about the climbing structure, we know that there's a skills grant that was approved for that particular apparatus or some portion of it, whether it gets used here at this building, or whether it potentially gets used in an off-site location, it's something that we're going to, as we move forward, it may come to the estimate, estimating process in terms of when we look at it, potentially as an alternate to see whether it fits into the overall budget pictures. Would still be a wonderful thing to incorporate into the building for a lot of reasons, but we, again, need to make sure that we respect the budgetary constraints.
This is on slab, there's no basement?
This potential, this layout is assuming it's on slab with no basement. I think what Rachel and Lucy will show, there's at least one option that has the potential of carving out some space below, and we can talk a little bit more about storage as we move forward, because there's a lot of things that need to be stored, so it's something to consider whether or not that storage capacity wants to be built wholly into this building, or potentially if there's an outbuilding that's associated with that, or again, off-site locations. I think all those things are really, have been part of our discussions. So just to the right of the horticultural shop, along the hallway, you see the central office, which has been sized to accommodate three staff members, has great visibility both into the ag equipment shop, as well as the horticultural shop, as well as the hallway across. And so this was the one location that didn't give quite as good visibility into the classrooms because it's difficult to find the spot where you can have 360-degree access to all spaces within the building, but this really offered, I think, the most advantages, is what we heard back, and so that's why we proceeded. So the ag equipment shop, we're currently showing three bays again, we're going to talk a little bit more about what equipment's going to go in there and what type of access is needed, the exact dimension of what's going to go on in there in terms of equipment being pulled in, and we're showing a storage room there. So that sort of rounds out the program, and sort of the configuration of things. And then, if I can move the slide over, so this option four B point two has reduced the footprint, again, if you go to the bottom right-hand corner, down to 9764, it's 100 square feet over where we were at the feasibility study, but it's really within that same order of magnitude where we were. So this is, this is something that we felt confident saying, okay, this at least it can work in the overall footprint that was previously understood, this is a lot simpler as a structure, in terms of plan geometry layout, and so we think that there'll be some cost efficiencies that will prove themselves out when we get to estimating. Really what we did here was actually take the north wall and the south wall and push them in each by three feet to get that size reduction. If I flip back and forth, you might be able to notice, like up in the classrooms, there's a little bit more elbow room between the tables and desks, and that is something that is conceded when we try to pull that additional square footage out of the classrooms, they're a bit below the 800 square foot that was in the program, but that's what happens as we try to make things smaller. We do think it still works, it's probably not too different from a lot of the classroom sizes that everyone is experiencing right now. And so that's, it's just something to be aware of in terms of how the efficiency is found. And likewise, along the shops and the head house, the southern wall being pushed up has pinched the shops a little bit. And so some of the work that we need to do moving forward is to look at some of the critical pieces that do want to get stored in, say, the ag equipment shop, and make sure that there's enough depth on those bays to get something inside if you've been stored overnight. We've heard that the trailer that you guys use is one of the items that may be in there overnight, so that's something we're going to get some dimensions on.
To clarify something you said, this is less square footage, but you're also implying it's going to cost less per square foot as well?
Less per square foot as compared to the feasibility study plan layout, the one that was sort of kinked and angled, just because there's more repetition to the structure here, it's a simpler sort of footprint, it's essentially a large rectangle in terms of what it is. The C L T does have a slight premium probably above the steel, it's really not, it's something we can talk about, I'm sure that you have some knowledge there, but from an overall geometry standpoint, this should be probably more cost-effective. And again, we're going to prove that out as we get to the estimating, estimators will tell us that.
Okay, I'm just concerned that we were like, here's this great thing, but now we're going to get all these haircuts, and now it's not quite such a great thing anymore.
So what we're trying to do is get back to the point where we still think it's a great thing, but it's at the same sort of gross square footage, just looking at that particular metric of where we're at.
Okay, and so can you clarify, does this have the internal climbing structure? Because that was a marquee, pretty exciting, very different thing.
Yes, no, it does, it does have the interior climbing structure. I think what we've talked about is the fact that because it was a skills grant that's already been awarded to the school, and that it doesn't have to actually be used per the grant award, I think, until June of 2025. We have the option, still thinking about it in the building, and we're still going to run that out, we think it's an exciting piece as well, and it would be wonderful to incorporate here. But again, we're going to get to a certain point where we have an overall number in front of us, and then probably all going to have to make some difficult choices about what's included in the project or not. So we want to be thinking about it in a flexible manner that has options. Right, and talking, just as a follow-up, even after our meeting this morning, talking to Joe, the principal bow climbing structure specifically, and you know, as an alternative of having it up at the forest, in that building. But then that would introduce a couple of issues. One, that building potentially then becomes a learning environment, and that introduces other issues with the department event that we've talked about in previous work. And then second of all, back to the design, thank you Helen for pointing out, to Jonathan, unless you can saw, so that the first shop, right in the middle of the upper left-hand corner of the shop, that's where the climbing structure is right now. So from the design perspective, if we said we can't afford the climbing structures to get the building, so get rid of it, how do we get rid of the space?
How do you repurpose the space?
Exactly, so I don't think we could really shrink the building to save on the climbing structure, how do you make that work? So I think at the end of the day, it probably will stay in the building.
I hope so, it's one of the exciting features, and if you take the candles off the birthday gate, it's just a gate.
That's a great point, and I think that's part of my feedback back to SMA, going from the first designs a few slides ago to this particular slide, from the outside looking in, it looks like the same design, but it's 2,000 square feet, almost smaller. So how you're able to shrink it without really changing the fundamental design, I think, is noteworthy. There's a couple of other points, I just want to really reinforce the feedback from what we saw back in June, and really the feedback that the two instructors provided and all the students provided, and Kevin Brown, who's director of security, he was part of the meeting. One example would be all the classrooms now will have doors so you can access classroom A to B to C, and that was from Kevin Brown's perspective as far as potential crisis, you have to move students from point A to point B. That initial design that he saw back in June didn't have doors adjoining all the classrooms. Another one, I think the feedback that the instructors provided was back to supervision and minus site, was there a way to line up the doors as an example between the shops and the classrooms? That initial design, they weren't lined up, so it'd be difficult if James was in the classroom to see students in the shop and vice versa. Now you can kind of see the sort of trunk of those first two classrooms, working left to right, and those doors are kind of lined up, line of sight with that main shop, and the same thing with the simulator classroom and the smaller classroom, right? So that feedback, I think, was noteworthy, so I do appreciate that. But I agree with you, how small can we go?
Yep.
And we lose.
Sure, and I assume that the equipment doors are still standard size to accommodate the vehicles that use them?
Right, it's part of the confirmation as well, we need to make sure that we understand everything that wants to go in there, and make sure that what we have is wide enough, even if it is maybe a typical for a gym.
Once upon a time, I went to the Amherst Regional Junior High School, which was in antiquity, and exactly the same building, but my seventh grade classroom had like an accordion wall with the other seventh grade classroom. Has there been any design discussion about having the common wall between two classrooms be something like that so it can accordion out to have a meeting space, a bigger meeting space for industry groups, for sort of a merged classroom day, just as an idea? I don't know if that changes the fire code or functionality, just as a thought, I don't know if those things are a nightmare for maintenance.
Take a look at that. As far as the teaching and learning, we do have a few classrooms on campus that have the accordion and the accordion wall, and nobody's happy with their new room.
Okay.
So if we have to choose, can you just take it out, or can we put a concrete wall up?
Okay.
Just from the sound barrier perspective.
Then that's excellent, yeah, fine.
Are there any other schools in any of the New England states or New York state that might have facilities like this that we could visit or take a look at, or ask them if there's any different changes, or what their sizes might be based on the students that are participating in the class?
I know there are other horticulture programs, in terms of the exact sort of standalone building, I don't think there are too many that follow this exact model, but we could certainly get you a list of other horticulture programs.
I think it's going to be hard, because those are programs as like a half-day program or part of a male with building. This is such a unique and remarkable institution, I think it would be hard to find something similar.
Be more like a university research outpost, like the Cranberry Station or the Turf Station.
If somebody else has already gone through it though, it's always good to, I'd be very glad to see if they're, if somehow we could improve on it.
The square footage of those classrooms that you're presenting, compared to what we took earlier?
Mine.
Tim, the square footage of the current classrooms that we had in the horticulture room, any other classrooms on campus, how do they compare with the square footage?
What's the number?
These are about 730, 750, in that range.
Yeah, that's about average.
Okay. So surely there's a state minimum, and it's more than?
Right.
Okay.
So to add to that, how does the rest of kind of the different spaces compare to the building currently?
Existing building?
Yeah.
It's a great question, so I think one of our, again, our next steps sort of moving forward is to get a better survey of that existing building so that we can both draw demolition drawings, documentation, estimating purposes, but also to answer that exact question, was to give you sort of a line by line as to how it compares to the existing. I think you'll find in those cases, it's probably going to be larger.
Yeah.
You guys are doing a lot with the existing reference of the building that were there, and I think previously, prior to the fires, well, I mean, there's a lot of activity in a very compact footprint.
Okay, I'm also seeing the greenhouse as being sort of a box. Greenhouses come in lots of different styles, Smith College has a couple of instances when you could possibly imagine, and then there's inflatable ones that are clearly, you know, single-use.
Yes.
Do you have a sense of what is going to be proposed, because that changes the bottom line quite a bit?
It does, and it can, certainly. So the greenhouse footprint that we're showing there matches the existing greenhouse footprint, and that's really to give us, again, flexibility in terms of how we're thinking about the cost estimating. I think it was previously even considered of the potential of relocating that existing greenhouse, not the base walls, but at least the superstructure that's there, putting it down again, so this would actually allow that to happen. There's certainly some other scenarios we could build new on top of that same footprint, we could consider a more compact footprint with a different type of geometry as well. It's almost like its own path of investigation to sort of flesh out all of those particular issues as well. And so we're going to be working with Mark and James to figure out exactly what the needs are there, we're going to be discussing probably directly with some greenhouse manufacturers to understand sort of where the capabilities are and where the cost models are again, because you're exactly right, there's a huge range of what that could end up requiring, and it's not, nor has it ever been included in the overall gross square footage number, because it's just a different type of square footage, you're not paying for concrete slabs and roofs and everything, it's a.
I also don't see an airlock, there could be an airlock installed, the greenhouse is measured with warmer and damper than the building needs to be.
Right.
A double-dooring would be virtual.
Anything hydroponic in that, or just?
So I think what we've heard is that the intent is to maintain a similar functionality to what's there, and so the hydroponics are all done in the greenhouse that's attached to the structure right now, and all the dirt work is done in the standalone hoop house that's down, down the hill.
Cornell University's got a fabulous facility hydroponics that they do is over there.
We're certainly interested to hear any resources, contacts that are out there to work with in terms of getting to the right functionality and the right scope of work as well, those two things that we have to get in alignment.
Is the idea to move the fuel bunker conics box over nearby?
So we've certainly discussed the fuel bunker and then sort of the realities of it, I don't know that we have a final resolution on that yet.
Okay, but it's not part of this building?
Not attached to this building, no, we're not seeing that. There was a request from the students to install and create a gas station as part of our construction, but we politely declined that.
It's a front, it's the E V book.
And so this is, I won't dwell on this, just because it's tough to read numbers up on the screen, we have what we call a space summary, which sort of breaks down all of the square footages for the building in tabular form. This is intended to be a little bit more digestible, just because it breaks out the individual program elements, and it shows for comparison purpose here, these are the, both the original feasibility study J S C diagrams, that was back when the building was considerably larger, 17,000 square feet, as well as the feasibility study program for the plan that was arrived at at 9648. Then gone ahead and.
The head house did change in size, so you're now sticking with. So you're now sticking with the current greenhouse?
So the greenhouse you see is not listed on here. So again, it's not, because it's not net square footage in terms of what we're building. I think it's intended to be consistent. I don't think I see the greenhouse on here unless I'm missing it.
The headhouse.
The headhouse.
Headhouse.
It's the interior space.
Interior space.
Yep. Right. So originally it was 1,600 square foot space that went down to 1,000. For B.1 option, it grew back up to 1,100, but again, we pulled it back to 1,000 just to try to match both overall square footage as well as sort of where those were. So I think everyone will have access to the slides you have after, so you have the ability to sort of screw back the numbers if you're so inclined. All right. The exciting part.
As we were talking about where to place this building on site, we thought it'd be good to step back a little bit and swin our eyes. And we can think about the site as really being two terraces. There's an upper terrace that's a level built in other buildings near the old, old greenhouse horticulture building. And then there's a lower terrace for the animal science building, those, the sports are, the handling. And then on site, we have two roadways that make that connection on grade. So as we think about where to site the building, we're either thinking about high, middle or low and trying to think about balancing access and accessibility, ADA access, and then also balance the cut build on site. We'll talk you through a bunch of options. So we've been working both at more of this diagrammatic phase as well as getting in-depth with the detailed grading. So the first option is more akin to what you saw originally in the, in the original proposal where we're pushing the building up as close as we can to the athletic field. We're providing an area for the focal point that could or could not have the greenhouse remaining in it. But we have now a vehicular area and a new court for the southern campus. We're using, reusing existing service drive to the south of the building and rising back up to the, the service area behind the building. Since in this option, the greenhouse moves to the south and we have some parking up near the upper terrace level. So this option, the building is up high at 229 and then would require probably the most amount of build for the, for the options we're considering. And one of the questions too came up was about the medicine poetry. We're waiting on survey information about where that is exactly and if it could be saved in this option. This option also anticipates bio retention stormwater area to the south of the building that we're definitely going to, we're going to need about stormwater site at the end of this. And then another question in all of these options is what the elevations the grades are around existing buildings. We want to make sure that we're not pushing water and soil up against existing buildings and that we're grading and maintaining access for those. So this is all based upon GIS information and once the survey is available, we'll definitely be refining this option. And this is more getting into the details of that. So as you can see, there's quite a bit of the drop for the bio retention area from that service area, service, service pad. And then the drops down between the building and animal sciences. And we're making up the grades along the drive on the north part of that focal point. And then again, between the motel and the building, so we'll have steeper areas of drive and then more shallow areas of drive. And this option, we anticipate fire department access on the west side of the building and possibly in the service drive with crossing the bio retention area, we'd be talking with the fire department if they, if they're okay with that. It may be a little bit more challenging getting trucks up into the service area behind the building.
Isn't that going to shed water on that hillside to the north side of the building now?
In this option, the building is up, up high.
It's about four feet lower than the athletic field. So there'd be a swale between it and the athletic, cut-off swale.
Between the both.
To, to, to take the water from the field around. It's not sure.
Yeah. So these are, these are really, really, really rough kind of massing of grading to see how things put on the site. We'll be finding this more, once we get more detailed survey.
Rather than having the swale and waste that land, is there some way you could put drainage in there and so your land's still usable?
You could put a French drain that would have a low profile to try to grab it with a pipe, a pipe to it.
Something that you're not going to use, use of the land because the land is becoming very precious here.
Right. We're not, we're talking about a very shallow swale and probably be, would be a good idea to put a French drain in the floor.
So that option was more of the, developing the high, that upper terrace area. This option is looking at the lower terrace area developing that. So we've moved, moved the building down and further to the east, closer to the animal science area, closer to those lower points on the service drive. What, what that does enable us to do is to provide a more significant swell between the sports field and the building. We still will be able to have an accessible walkway to the front of the building, which will be on the west face. We have really good visibility of that front edge from the academic buildings and other buildings on the, sort of to the west of the site. It allows us to buy, to bring water also around the west side of the building. And then more, more flexibility with vehicular access and now the building on the south side, also in the winter conditions, having the south side that's good for melting snow and ice through, through solar aspect.
So the current road goes like right here, right through the building?
Yeah.
And this, this is where the conics boxes are, here? This is sort of the back dirt road?
And this one, like, I think all of the existing greenhouse staying is, is an option. And this one, the fire department access would be to the west face and the south face. Another question here. And this one, this one would be less, would definitely be, we think would be less for the site. Again, this is a massive number of grading, just the significance of that, of that swell.
Because here, there's a more severe grade change between the field and the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, eight, eight feet or so. Finish floor, so.
So this is showing the building kind of down like in a depression, right?
It's, so the parking lot that you have is about 220, 221, 222. So it would still be a little higher than the parking lot.
Okay.
So much lower in the elevation of the... This one is very similar to what you just saw, similar elevation, similar cut build. But in this one, we're introducing a little bit of another rain guarding, stormwater feature near feature between that and the service drive. In addition, we, this works with what Matt's drive, rotating greenhouse in the same alignment as the building and moving the parking spaces to the south side of the building. This one, in terms of grading, what we were starting to see is that this could be more, more challenging and that the greenhouse and the building that sort of act as a dam for any of that, any of that water coming down. So we're just...
Yeah, that's not ideal at all. Because the, your, the low point is right near your entrance. Because it sort of isn't the, the junction of the terrace drop. So, so that would not be recommended because you'd be relying on a pipe to get the water out of that there and it's better not to rely on a pipe.
Right. And as we were also thinking about the medicine poetry, which we think maybe where that tree is shown, trying to think of how to shrink the width of the building north to south, see if we can save that tree if we need to. And so in this option, we flip that, what happens, we flip the service yard to the north side and kind of allow the site to fall quickly down to the medicine poetry if it's, if that's where it is. Some of the drawbacks of this were that, again, paved areas would be possibly on the north side, which would maybe be more challenging to manage in icy conditions. It would require a tanning wall, which could hide the service yard from the field, but also kind of separates the bays from other parts of campus and is expensive. And then the front entry could be a little confusing because we'd be walking around the building, particularly from the mark, sort of northwest to get to the main entry. And then we're anticipating, this is one of the, the 228 elevation, finished floor elevation is high enough that, you know, down to 219, 220 at the southeast corner, we may be able to have a base on storage, drillers, storage underneath that wall. But again, that would be a lot of exposed foundation wall without usable access alongside. And then this is another version of that, looking at moving the greenhouse to the southeast corner and having a parking on that side, an entry point there, creating kind of a node for the animal science building, the horticulture building. But many of the same challenges are where's the tree and where our students came from on site. That's the, the...
I think some of the challenges that are not necessarily shown with these options and sort of flipping things in terms of what we've previously shown is that some of the interior relationship between spaces and the main entrance, all those things are going to get tossed up in the air a bit and we'd have to sort those out. Not to say that they're impossible to rework, but we don't know yet because we haven't gone through that sort of full exploratory process. If it was something that this was of interest, we could go down that road, but we want to make sure that there's enough other benefits that we want with that investigation.
The summary of what we're looking at. In addition, I also wanted to talk a little bit about the stormwater as we think about these options. North Hampton has just changed their stormwater regulations. This would be our second, the second project, second project in cities that would be subject to these regulations. They're a little bit more strict in terms of developing your project footprint and you want to talk about a little bit?
Surely, I mean, there's basically two components, the water quality component and the quantity, the detention required. So water quality has become much stricter. We're, we're dealing not just with total suspended solids, but with nitrogen and phosphorus removal. And the best way to do that is infiltration, but they're requiring them to infiltrate eight tenths of an inch over all of the impervious area, not just the new impervious area because this is technically a redevelopment. And so we're going to have to do quite a bit of water quality. And if the soils are not good or the, or the estimated high groundwater is, is high, we would have to do that with hydrodynamic separators and maybe other filters for the phosphorus and nitrogen. So we would hope to be able to do this with rain gardens and detention areas that can also infiltrate. Under the water quantity component, they've changed the storm such that there are much higher rainfall numbers. For example, the 100-year storm is, I think it's around 11 inches now, where we were using seven or eight inches. So that makes a big difference over, especially impervious area for on off. So we will be looking at detention here because we, the detention, the, the quantity is only on the additional impervious area, but there will be, I would say, maybe close to 20,000 square feet of new impervious area here, which translates probably to about 5,000 cubic feet of required storage, which is slowly let out. So that's going to have to go somewhere and possibly under the service area in some of these options. And, and then we would hope that the water table is low enough that we can allow some to infiltrate, that we have that two feet of separation maybe.
Are, are you counting pavement in your total impervious area?
Yes.
Okay. Can we use permeable pavement to help with that? And if we're talking about fill and we're worried about water table, well, let's just find some sandy fill.
Oh yeah, the fill would, would, does somewhat solve the problem.
So, so it causes a cost, but it solves the problem?
It could solve, it could solve the problem. If there is a problem, we might dig a hole like what we see. Though we are on the lower terrace, which, which gets...
If we're creating an awful lot of fill, aren't we sort of presenting ourselves with essentially the opportunity to create a gigantic bleach field?
Yeah, we can, we, if the service area were high, we could, we could put all these under, yes. Porous pavement, I think we heard this morning that, that there's a liking for gravel due to the equipment coming in.
Even better, yeah, even better.
Any test boring, is that, when is that going to happen?
Those, those services, we need to be contracted.
Okay. That's going to tell you a lot about what the soil are out there.
Don't they have backhoe here? They're all?
Yeah, so they, these would be test pits for, for stormwater and so we need to go to eight feet. And then we, we, we look at the pit and we...
It's a big backhoe.
Yeah.
I'm a slow evaluator. You dig the hole, I'll log it.
So at this morning's meeting, a few of us had some feedback. We sort of liked the concept around A1. So you can sort of see that focal point, I call it a roundabout rotary, you're in New England. And then you move it down back to that back access road, John, that you're referring to. We were talking about sort of road type. And I think the feedback that James and Mark gave back in June was really from coming down that back access road to the service area, the animal science area, if we could avoid pavement altogether, that would be ideal, mostly because of the bulldozers with the metal tracks, it'd just tear up the pavement. So I think that's a benefit to this particular discussion, but, but again, at the opening, I said I'd love to have any input from the rest of you. The smaller group, we sort of liked the idea of A1.
I do too. I do too.
I was thinking the same one, yeah.
I, I'm proud of our industry and I don't like the idea of let's put it in a hole.
And the flow of traffic is very important to keep it moving rather than it's a dead end.
While we're growing money, it's very impactful.
Yeah, indeed. And I, and you know, I liked your idea of that, that's, there's a roundabout rotary and it could be a collection area where there's teachable space or, you know, just a gathering spot. And I feel like we're starting to see that, you know, metastasize throughout the other options.
Just to be clear, so A1, there is a difference between A and A1. So A1 is more of that, that in the hole, okay?
Oh, then I like A better than A1. Yeah, I like it, I like it.
But my understanding with A is a lot more fill involved.
Yeah, which has some potential benefit.
And A is in the field also. You notice the, the, what is it, the little booth?
The press box.
Yes, the press box. A is, is in line with the press box, which may be a problem with the left.
So press box versus press box.
I kind of like the idea of having a building somewhat offset from the field, not having it just kind of so tucked and kind of jammed up in that corner. And then the, the service area too on A1, I like that a bit more than A because it's kind of, it's not as isolated, you kind of, you kind of get access to, because we do campus management, so it's like, you have to bring a mower all the way out of the service yard on A all the way around and back out, whereas you can kind of cut that in half as well as access to a test port. Kind of important, but I know bringing it up would kind of have trouble with that service yard, but...
I feel like if it is set down, you're going to have a great view of the roof.
From the field, from the field, right?
Yep. It's going to be, isn't there something down there? I don't know, it's like, and if it's a, a green roof, it's like just more field. Or if it's asphalt or membrane, it's just a great view of a roof. And I, I was hoping this could be a marquee, that it's a focal point to new shiny building, let's, let's show off our new car.
Well, neither, I take that point, but the field elevation was 233 or something? So, so neither of them have the building sitting up, so its finished floor is even with the field. So one is low and one is lower.
Okay.
Just to keep them...
Okay, thank you.
It wouldn't be feasible to have the finished fly the same way as the field. That would be, that would be even more foul. I mean, if you take a walk out back there, you can see it's quite a big elevation change just on that. just on that small slope.
And to be clear, there was never an option to put parking underneath building?
We haven't looked at parking underneath.
No, no, I mean, I'm sorry, the parking of the machinery.
I think one of the options, that was a potential, in terms of what storage would go underneath there, but there would have some ability to have storage space underneath. But we would need to have it be high enough at access and really from that upper plateau. And then the bottom access is going to be from the lower plateau essentially coming in to get that, and have a chance of working out because it's about 10 foot difference between the two, right?
Yeah.
And it's still not tremendous in terms of order of...
And that's a big monkey wrench, so change your design a lot.
Right. And the question too is about accessibility between those floors, are we in a situation where we need...
Oh sure, yeah. Yes. I think just in terms of the perception of the building, so some of the next steps that we'll come back to, like we did for the interview, we start modeling these things and letting everyone be able to visualize both building and site together. So I think certainly we can provide some viewpoints from the field so that we can really get a sense of whether or not it feels funky. And I don't think it will be. I think the building is going to be tall enough, we were just chatting, I don't think we have that exact number for you right off the top of our heads right now, but we'll be able to show you in terms of what the look and feel will be to give you a level of comfort really.
And I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but if you tuck the equipment parking underneath, it has some drawbacks, perhaps any elevator and have less visibility, but it's less roof and less foundation, so there's costs. The second floor is always cheaper than the first floor.
So how low is A1? Is that kind of with the existing grade down there, right down that road? Or is it still going to be brought up a bit?
The lowest point on the road is 220 and that building is at 225.
Okay.
So the thought was that we would actually raise the road a bit. And then, because the 220 wraps around, at least on GIA, the 220 wraps around the road so we, and then, and then the road actually rises a little before it heads down to the road. So we would raise the road maybe to 223. And then the building's at 225 and the field's at 233.
And what is the grade for A, not A1, like what's the delta between the two?
A, I think the building's at 229 and the reason for that is it basically is a four and a half percent slope for the pedestrian way to the entrance to the building.
So it's four feet different?
It's four feet below the field, yep. And then it's quite steep.
Four feet higher.
Yes, than the other one.
Than A1.
Is there a way that A1 could kind of, if you bring up that road a little bit more, almost as a compromise, kind of not having it down in a hole, you kind of bring A1 up in it?
Something a little...
Just kind of in terms of drainage and everything too?
Yeah, yeah.
Balancing the cost and fill equation, right? I think both of those things will come into play and the fill may be helping us, but it'll cover the cost and so it's, again, what is manageable budget balancing all designers? Another reference point, where is the animal science building? Do we know?
We're thinking it's 227.
Based on GIS, but it could be...
The GIS, those odd things around buildings.
Little mountains.
227, A1 is 225, the Horticultural Building, so a couple feet, so that's a good reference point to...
Looking right on here right across the field, you can see the, this part of the foundation of that building is peeking out there, so...
Other comments, feedback, questions?
Well, is there any reason at this point, so, my daughter's looking at colleges and what I want to hear from her is which colleges she doesn't like. That's more important than what she does, so you can drop us up off the list. How should we go forward, just like systematically? Should we strike some? Or we want to keep all the walls in the air and then realize some of them are never going to be favored? What's the best approach?
Yeah, the Bs jump out at me when you ask that. Is there any advantage to having the parking and the access on the field side? It seems more difficult.
There's more disadvantages, I think, to B because, like I was saying, with the access to the tennis courts, to be able to bring a piece of machinery from the service area all the way around that loop and all the way back down, especially in terms of, I don't know, just because it's such a short distance, it'd be easy to just be able to shoot right out there to the tennis court and not have to go all the way around and kind of save the life by rubber tires and tracks as well.
A2 has that sort of little island of green that, like, that's two roads next to each other. Why do that?
Stormwater, water quality, because the apron, the service apron would sheet flow into that green island and get some treatment. Also ran a fire truck, a pumper truck, not a ladder, around and it makes it around that A2, yeah, and it can go like that. Probably could do that, maybe not. But it is a nice way to deal with stormwater, with sheet flow.
You're saying is that island could almost be, like, whether it be just like kind of there, would it be almost a depression that...
It'd be a depression.
Okay, that water would run into, okay.
Not very deep, maybe a foot deep. Six inches of pondy.
Yeah, it would have growth there, right? Rain garden bioswale?
Again, all dependent on soil, but we can do filtering.
I guess the B options seem to me to require two ways down. They seem to be kind of doubling, doubling effort there, more pavements.
retaining law requirements.
Yeah.
I would have looked at A2.
I'm not seeing an advantage in this.
It almost wouldn't look right either if we, like we're saying, like say we bring in stone or some sort of gravel fill there in the service area, that wouldn't make sense just have it dead end right there, blacked out to the, and it wouldn't look necessarily pleasing to the eye if you're standing from this level here looking over there, you just kind of see that difference.
I don't think, I like the roundabout. I like, I like that it becomes a hub instead of like, oh yeah, down the end of the road. Could this, if this is a retention area, couldn't that same retention be right there?
Yes, definitely.
So we discussed that this morning, there's more questions. Because Jonathan, right where you pointed on A1, that we're getting close to the drop off, that access road that we have down to the orchard, and then down the bottom of the orchard road there is a grove, so that was a little of the discussion this morning. Could that become the catchment area for the stormwater?
And maybe both of them on A1, I mean, two linear features.
The more, the more the better. With the new stormwater regs.
Do you have any thoughts?
Well, to be honest, it's a little hard to see because it's small, but one's where the access is on the south side of the building, works better, to be honest, whether the building's higher or lower. It's kind of irrelevant to the usability of it.
And just for the team, so Will Coffey is the City Procurement Officer, he's also one of those who do this work.
Thank you, Eddie. Nice to meet you all. Yeah, Will Coffey here to assist for any procurement needs in regard to compliance with Massachusetts procurement laws, so. Just listening in, this is fascinating, happy to be here.
I like the idea, to echo what James just said, that if there's parking to the south, you're going to be looking at, if we solarize the roof, it's a bit of a bragging point. But if the solar is all hidden in the back, it's just sort of like, oh yeah, around back where the hall it is, that's where all the good happens.
To answer your question, the one on the top row in the middle that has like a bigger, more open parking area is easier for students to use?
Yeah. Would you, would the service area itself in front of the doors be gravel as well?
Yes.
I would recommend. I think most of this has to be probably paved, is currently pavement.
Yes.
But once we get down to like this intersection, all back, I don't think has to be pavement. My recommendation.
It'd be a lot cheaper to have guaranteed in that whole spot there, that's just all gravel.
The one thing we might want to do though is just make sure that the fire department would also be on board with that concept in terms of making sure they can get their apparatus down there.
True. What is the difference between here and finished floor? Do you have a sense of that? Just, I'm asking because it's going to impact, you know, right now we just have...
Sorry, we're just going to go back to the larger...
That was A1. A1, I'm pointing again.
Speak a little...
You guys try to...
So your wish is to have it, to not have much grade, just for access?
Just for what we have to do as far as ramps and stairs to get from A to B. I just wanted a sense of that. Okay, so this is A1, so we've got an FFP of... Of 225, okay. Yeah, if that's true, that works nicely. I'm just, there's a good bit of slope here.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, that's an argument for 225 because it would make the entrance pretty smooth.
It'd also work in terms of plowing and stuff too if it is kind of slope and kind of melting snow and water runoff, if it all, not necessarily that you want it to run into the gravel and kind of wash it out, but in terms of it kind of slopes off through that area. And if you did have some sort of retention spot that it would flow into, down in that lower area over here, so it'd run off there as well as down there to kind of spot that off.
Possibly there's a, this might also help, there's a, there's a swell here, here between these two buildings. And so we're going to have to deal, so right now we have like a four and a half percent slope to stop to be five percent to be, into the building for ADA. So we do have kind of a grading in this direction, but we can swale that possibly and somehow maybe tie this part of the building into here, so we have several outlets to mimic existing conditions. And then this has, the roundabout has, can you go to that through the screen? I think the roundabout has...
To which one?
The one, the next slide, I think. Or maybe I should have brought it...
Turn it to the side, you're pretty soon.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the roundabout has a sort of a sheet flow aspect to it right now. I don't know how that would work with the greenhouse. But you can see the swell here. Anyway, just a follow up.
We really haven't gotten into the detailed design of what the focal point would be. I think there's still a lot of opportunities there. Talked about learning environment that could happen there after the classroom space, could be a good tree planting location. It's a lot of thought and discussion that we can have about what that could be, but I think it has opportunities also in terms of potential for drainage and stormwater management. Interesting fact that I'm thinking about the students, I think the students were the, by far the best stakeholder that we had with EVAC. And they immediately looked at that focal point and the original design that this committee saw, there was that beautiful artistic climbing structure that was in that focal point. They said absolutely not, it's a waste of time, waste of space. They want to be climbing outside, but if they're outside, give me a tree.
To have it inside is if it's conditions like this, you can be climbing inside it.
Let me ask you this, the roof of this building is going to be pretty large in square footage and there's going to be a lot of rain runoff, right? Is that water, can that be collected and then used somewhere else rather than just use it as a runoff and then worry about retention ponds and things like that? Going to be used in the greenhouse or somewhere else?
Right, so I think there is a plan for a cistern and so that's a positive thing. The problem with the regulations are that you can't count on a cistern to always be empty the next time it rains. And so it really, it's a nice thing that you could say in the stormwater report, the city would like that. It can't be like, we're taking care of this volume because it's going into that cistern because it might be full because of the crazy weather. You don't, you don't get to your cisterns.
So this is A1, just to be crisp, we're still talking about shortening the building. The current floor of the former building is at 231-ish, right? And we're talking about scooching it down to 225. So it will be lower, correct? That's what A1 does, is it scooches it down by one six, seven, eight.
Because then it has this, basically the idea is it links it to that room.
Correct, but that's the, put it in a hole thing.
It does.
Can I add to the cistern part? In terms of getting rid of that water that's already filled up, I don't know if there's some sort of deal that you can make with the fire, or with the fire department? I know, I live in West Hampton, I know they have, on top of Hampshire Regional, they have the fire department in town. They take water for their tank or whatever, for their pump truck, they use that. When it fills up, they'll pump it out and stuff. So I don't know if there's some sort of deal that you can make with that or if there's some sort of kind of backup system where they use that water if we have it readily available and fill it up?
You sell it, the swimming pools around there.
You need to account for 11 inch storm?
That's the hundred year event.
That's what you need to be able to...
Well, we need to make the hundred year event, the peak flow from the hundred year event be less than the existing flow, so we model. And so, so of course in existing, existing conditions, we'll also use 11 inches, but there's, will be less impervious area, so. So the rule, we do like a rule of thumb to establish what we think we might need to store and it looks like 4,000, 5,000 cubic feet. And then we let it out slowly through the...
How many cubic feet are in a residential cistern?
What are they?
I don't, I'm not sure that we're actually thinking about a residential cistern.
I'm just volumetrically, that's all.
Yeah, no, I don't have that.
Is it a cistern or an Olympic swimming pool that we need to be thinking about putting on landscape?
So a big cistern might be 10,000.
Okay, so half of that?
So that's 1,000 feet.
So it might be multiple.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay.
But, so I think the cistern is a good idea. I don't know how that relates to phosphorus and nitrogen if we decide to put it in the cistern and then dump it on the ground. So, anyway.
Cisterns is only, it's more part of maybe an educational or a practical use and not going to solve in any way, shape or form the stormwater issue.
I believe it's just...
Yeah, we need a farm of cisterns.
The surface area, I think, is approximately 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, so for example, we could use the service area for underground storage.
About 5,000 square feet, so about a foot.
We put in some chambers, depending on where the groundwater is, I mean, of course we'd like to put in a deeper chamber, but if we, if we, if we have six feet or we find high groundwater, then we can put the cistern under the service area.
And those don't find, hold those, you're driving on them?
Oh, correct, that's, you're fine, yep.
And does that require some sort of almost sewage drain or would it just be just infiltrate through the...
Maybe there'd be those chambers that are arched chambers with stones between, or they'd be others, little boxes.
Yeah, okay.
And it'd be all that lined with storage under there. And then it would have a, an outlet structure where you see you would control it with a small outlet into a manhole and then you would discharge it.
So you make the parking lot entirely empty?
Yeah. But, but only, only the bottom would reach out, the rest would go out.
And so in that system, where would that water go out? Would you kind of dilate it out down the grade down there?
We'd probably, somewhere in here with some kind of level spreader to spread it out so that it can sheet flow down.
Yeah. Because my, the only other concern is that road down to the apple where you go there, you wouldn't want, there, you get hammered enough with the water and everything.
It does, solid water bars, yeah.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't want any more, any extra flow necessarily that way, but if it flows kind of, kind of down...
Yeah, I think we choose a place somewhere.
If we go diagonally that way, that would be all right.
We definitely choose that carefully. Probably quite a wide level spreader to get it to spread out.
Okay, for today's meeting, I'd like to make an offer. How about we get rid of the B options so you guys can start focusing on maybe just the three options? Or do this committee want to get, excuse me, rid of any of the other options?
Well, it seems to me that all the As are, they're all As because they're similar, and I have the feeling that, that this team is going to kind of exploit those, and it seems to me that there might be kind of a compromise between A and A1. They have many similar elements, there, there's only a four-foot difference between those two floor elevations, it's not like one sits up nice and tall and one is in the hole. There's only a four-foot difference, and in fact, I was, you know, if, if A1 were to go up a couple more feet, it might help us on that, I'm going to call it the street side where that parking is, so you could slope the water away from the building a little bit, and, and incorporate some of the good things about A and the good things about A1. That, that's my sense of where we're headed.
If you have the storage underneath, can't you lift that up higher and take part?
Yep. I mean, so, so it all plays, I think you're right, that, that extra lift may be needed.
Yeah.
Out of respect for time, I, it sounds like the committee were sort of liking the A options for all these reasons, and I recommend that we take it forward and allow you to keep playing with those A options. And I think, again, at the end of the day, I think I also heard, I agree, the whole cut and fill dilemma, probably a poor amount of money to us, how much do we want to cut and how much do we want to fill. I noticed more, and I do want to talk about the donations, we have an excellent, a lot of donations and that, so.
Yeah, I think we can get through the administress.
Do you want me to?
Yes, yes, please. Administress, and so I think we've particularly caveat here today, so Craig Wilber, who's the OPM, who had a car failure today, he would be here, has secured the services of a surveyor, so I believe he'll be out on site next week, fingers crossed. Berkshire Design Group has done a great job of working with, you know, sort of GIS data, so again, caveat, caveat, we need the actual data. You've heard Lucy talk about a test pit, so we'll need to secure services for also geotechnical borings. It does look like we have a good sense of where the building's going to be, so now we can really scope out those services and solicit proposal. So, and wetlands, I believe, have actually been flagged already, so, so we're working, chipping away at it. And in terms of information from you all, the all equipment survey, data survey, I believe is underway right now, Craig is helping with that, as well as Tim. Sure, we'll need some input from James and Mark, and we also do need that simulator info, I think you're working on getting us that, to make sure we have that classroom sized appropriately. In terms of schedule, this is just a snapshot of the schematic design phase, which is what we're in right now. You know, I, I did push out those site investigation dates a little bit, again, our, our goal is to by, you know, early, late, late August, early September, be, be able to put something in front of our cost estimator. So obviously, all of that, you know, all of this exploration needs to be fed into what goes out to, to them. So we are still targeting, you know, having a good sense of where we are with SD by the end of September. That's it, and then, yep, we'll continue to work with the working group on a weekly basis, and I understand that the next building committee meeting is the 15th of August.
When will we start talking about systems and design elements? Is it going to be wood clad, or is it going to be painted concrete, is it going to be metal roof?
I think it's going to have to be next meeting, because that has to be integrated as well.
Well, once we figure out the sort of the footprint and the sort of internals, is that the next thing, or is there another intermediary?
No, I think all of those things are really just going to start to play in now. Our, our MEP engineers are going to start to jump on board, you know, and we'll definitely be continuing to develop the architecture and the, and the systems.
I think we feel good about the interior layout, actually, in terms of where it is now, which is a huge help in terms of the project development, so I think what we foresee of the next building committee meeting is similar to what we did today for order plan in terms of site layout, we'll talk about systems and options that we have there, as well as sort of exterior look and feel.
Yeah.
Of what we'll be building with.
Which is probably a good segue into donations, so that was a question in the last building committee, and I want to thank Craig and Crystal looking into it. So the answer is, we are allowed to receive donations around supplies, equipment, heating elements, so on and so forth. So I think once we get to the final design, design phase, and we know exactly what we need, we are able to then go out and ask for donations, which hopefully will then reduce the cost, so. You can't, you see donations as far as labor, but as far as building materials, yes, we can.
Are those donations tax deductible? I assume they are.
I would, would you say?
Yeah.
You asking me?
Yes.
I would imagine, I mean, if there's supplies, you could assign a monetary value, I imagine, yeah, but I could, I could look at and verify.
It's always helpful.
Yeah.
I was looking, and it says as long as you itemize, so there are some, I'm sure most, most itemize, and then it goes into the adjust, the amount that you can deduct is based on the adjusted gross income, so there's definitely, I'm not in the county, so certainly you can basically ask for some.
Sure. Anything else? Any comments, questions?
Not to confuse everyone, but to answer Mr. Roberts' question, the state of Connecticut and state of Rhode Island have standalone ag buildings for their, their individual centers, so if you want, you don't have to go far down 91 to see an example of one, and they're staffed, Connecticut's are staffed all summer. If you wanted to see how they do, you know, standalone ag building of this similar square footage.
What's your thoughts on it?
Well, I, I think we have a good idea here. Just, you mentioned that earlier, that was...
But things that they have done that you think maybe we should be doing here, or versa?
The other problem with that is, they have a lot more money, so some of the things they made, we liked, but we have already taken some of those concepts out because we couldn't, we couldn't afford them.
Right, but as Andy said, you know, the donations might start to come in for some of this as well.
Yeah.
And there might be more money.
Yep.
So students spend four years of their growth within this building, but the teachers spend a lot longer. I'm not convinced that the office is big enough. I think the office is a place where printing happens, where the most valuable, expensive tools are kept, and frankly, it's, it's where teachers who go above and beyond spend long hours, and so I feel like that space should be looked at carefully.
Yeah, since you mentioned the office, I also, you said that a request was that it be a spot that could look out over multiple classrooms on the hallway. I know it, it can't look at every inch of the building, but right now, I did feel like it was still mostly just looking at the bottom, right-hand, most classroom, it hadn't yet gotten that full look, and that might just be a quick chiropractic of moving the storage away from it, but, but I would agree that a little bit of attention to the office would
It's where private meetings happen.
Right.
Parent-teacher conferences may happen there, or any sort of counseling. Get really nice chairs for the office. If the teacher likes their office, they like their job, and they do a good job. Get good chairs.
I think in order to keep moving here, folks, we did work on ourselves, we got through with Andy with the donations, we're trying to get you money to pay him a New Year gift, and if we can move that forward right now, I'd really appreciate your time, thank you.
Anything else? It's August 15, 3 o'clock, same place. Thank you.